Good evening, everybody. This is 2022 zoning board meeting of...
You're good.
He's got it. Okay, very good. Yep. Who's there? Sorry. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashville City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom with the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at nashua nh.gov/AgendaCenter. Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. There will be a clock visible on the Zoom meeting to keep track of the time. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you when it is your turn. Please use the lower hand option when done. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the city of Nashville bylaws and state of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to pass any motion. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I'm the Chair. On Zoom, we have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who serves as our Vice Chair. Here in the room, we have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our Clerk, Mr. J.P. Boucher, and Mr. Rob Shaw. We don't have any of the alternate members in attendance. In addition to the Board members, we have with us here in the room Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, and on Zoom, Ms. Kate Poirier, Zoning Coordinator. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there was anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for taking it not attending in person. Mary Ellen McKay.
I'm sorry. I'm here. I'm alone in my office, and I apologize for my phone ringing. And I'm here with my little three-year-old Shih Tzu. And the reason I'm on Zoom is because I zigged when I should have zagged, I twisted my right knee, and I now am on anti-inflammatories, heating pad, ice, and a brace. So 2022, yippee.
Okay. Hope you're feeling better soon.
Yeah.
Jack Courier.
Present.
J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Rob Shaw.
Present.
Okay. Let's see here. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you. I will now read the first case into the record. Case number one. Owner, Paul and Renee Bodmer. Applicant is Udi Daniel Balbina, Udi Jewelry Corporation, 110 West Hollis Street, Sheet 86, Lot 47, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 116, to convert a former barber and beauty salon into a jewelry store. This is the RC Zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present the case? Okay. Would you please step up to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Okay.
Feel free to take that out of the stand if it's easier to do that.
Can you hear me fine?
We can hear you, yes.
My name is Eileen Castillo. The business is Udi Jewelry, and it's my husband's name. He's also on Zoom. He couldn't attend because he's home with the kids, and it's too cold to take them out. So I was like, I'll just go, and you go on Zoom. I'm going to talk about who we are. So Udi Jewelry Corp. was founded in February 2021. We are a corporate business offering fine jewelry to the public. Our goal and mission are to provide a great selection of jewelry to our customers at an affordable price. While we sell, we sell 14K gold jewelry. We have a variety of chain, necklace, bracelet, pendant. We also do custom orders, picture pendant, wedding rings, jewelry for kids, watches, and many more. Our vision: We are a passionate individual dedicated to creating magical experience for our customers, employees, and suppliers by providing a variety of jewelry to give to their loved ones. And our goal to bring to the community is a convenient space where they can go in and find a nice piece of jewelry or even a custom-made jewelry at an affordable price with the opportunity to finance as well. Also, we want our customer to experience a great customer service, and we are hoping to offer jobs opportunity in the area for those who are interested. And that's it.
Okay. So that's it. Questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I was just wondering, the structure attached to the store, if I could say that, is that a home, or is that...
That's a home.
And is that... Yeah, Kate's actually... I didn't even notice that. I drive down the street all the time, but you see the store, and then you keep going. And in the pictures, it dawned on me that that is part of the structure. So is that currently a single-family home?
I'm not sure. I think it's a two-family home. But it's the owners for the jewelries, well, the location, 101, they own the whole property. And I think they have two family living there, and then the store will be separate.
Okay. So if this were to be approved, your situation is you'd be, I guess, renting the building as a jewelry store, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just the front building. They'll manage the tenants.
And is there parking behind the store?
Yes. There's parkings for the tenants, and there's also two parkings in front of the garage that belongs to where the jewelry store will be.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm all set.
Any other question, Mr. Shaw?
I guess just, and this might be, I might need Mr. Falk's help also. Do you already know what you want to do for signage on the building? Because I think there might be some restrictions there. So I'm wondering if that's come up in any discussions already with the...
Yes, we actually... I was trying to print the picture, but I couldn't. I do have, this is our logo. I don't know if you guys can see it. So that's what's going to go in the front of the store, but instead of going down, it's going to be sideways. So it's going to take the whole front of the store. We run it by the owners, and they approved it. So we show them pictures how we want it, and they just want to get measurement to see how big it's going to be. But they already approve how the sign will look.
Mr. Falk, could you comment?
Well, yes, Mr. Shaw. This is a RC Zone, so it's basically a multifamily zone, and the uses on this property have been non-conforming, you know, throughout time. So in this zoning district, you have a choice of two signs, either a six-square-foot wall sign or a 10-square-foot ground sign, whichever one either fits on the property or fits on the building. So you get one or the other. So you'd have to come in for a sign permit, and you have to meet the sign ordinance.
It has to... Repeat that last part? It has to...
It's either a six-square-foot wall sign or a 10-square-foot ground sign. You get one or the other.
Okay. I think we're going with the one in the wall.
Okay. So you would be allowed a six-square-foot wall sign.
Okay.
It would be like two feet by three feet. A little bit smaller than that bulletin board in back here.
Okay, yeah.
That's about three by five. It would be a little bit less than that.
Okay.
And you would need a sign permit, by the way.
Okay. And that's driving through here as well.
Yeah, that's to our department.
Okay, good. So I'll run it by.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. What hours are you expecting to run the store, and how many employees do you have?
So right now, it's going to be just my husband, me and my husband. And then we are working from 10:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that will be Monday through Saturday. And then Sunday, we're still discussing if we're going to work on Sunday, but we're thinking 11 to 4 on Sundays.
Okay.
So we want to do before, you know, quiet time on the area. So we're going to open 10:30, because quiet time usually starts around 8 or 10:00. So we want to start 10:30, and then we're going to go home around 7:30 a.m.
Okay, thanks. That it for questions from the Board? Mary Ellen, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any. I think they've all been answered through my fellow Board members.
Okay. Yeah, feel free to, when we are doing these, to use the raise hand to let me know that you want to say something. Okay. So if there's no more questions from the Board, I'll ask if there's anybody here in the room who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Please use the raise hand feature so I can see. I'm not seeing any. Okay, that's fine. Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application here in the room? Not seeing anybody about on Zoom. Not seeing anybody there either? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I think it meets the points for the variances, the variance. Again, this is a location that's had a business before, a beauty salon in the past, as noted. I don't think that this use is any more intense than that would be. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I agree with what Mr. Boucher says. I'd also like to throw in, it's been a business as long as I can remember. Kind of some businesses have come and gone there over the years. It looks kind of downtrodden lately, and I think that this opportunity could well kind of brighten up the neighborhood in this area. And also, the hours of operation don't concern me, because right nearby, there's several other businesses that operate well into the evening. I'm not sure exactly what time, but I'm sure it'd be well beyond seven in the gas station and such. So I think it would, I think it's all good.
Thank you.
And of course, that special condition of it being a business, that's for many years, that's, I think qualifies this property as unique to the request.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, very much like what Mr. Courier and Mr. Boucher have already said. And especially, I mean, the structure itself even just presents as a business, it's clearly not a residential part of that structure. And so it's very much as between its history as a business, and just even structurally, I think it makes sense to continue to have a business in this location, and for the other reasons, I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McKay.
I too am in support for all of the reasons. And, excuse me, when Mr. Shaw asked the question around signage and Mr. Falk answered it, that took away a little bit of a concern, too. It's an area that can support it, and I can support this application.
Great.
Thank you.
And I also support the application for all the reasons my colleagues have mentioned. Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Paul A. and Renee L. Bodmer, the owners, and Udi Daniel Balbina, Udi Jewelry Corp., the applicant, for 110 West Hollis Street, Sheet 86, Lot 47. The request is for use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 116. And this is to convert the former barber/ beauty salon into a jewelry store, and this is in the RC Zone. This use variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. As noted, this has been a, various businesses for quite a long time, several decades, we believe at least. And the structure itself presents as a commercial part of the structure, not as a residential. So the usage, therefore, is reasonable and feasible for the applicant to pursue this way through the variance. It will be within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. And for those reasons, I move to approve this use variance.
Second, thank you, Mr. Boucher. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. It's five to nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
There's a 30-day window of appeal. If you have any questions, contact the Planning Department, and they'll be glad to help you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Moving on to case number two. Owner is William J. Jr. and Catherine Vassal, owners of 25 Hunt Street, Sheet 102, Lot 30, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. Proposed Lot 3, one, minimum lot area, 6,000 square feet required, 5,000 square feet proposed. Two, minimum lot width, 60 feet required, 50 feet proposed. And for Lot, Proposed Lot 30-1, minimum lot area, 6,000 square feet required, 5,000 square feet proposed, and minimum lot width, 60 feet required, 50 feet proposed. I'll request to subdivide one lot into two lots. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 6. So we've been handed a handout, which is from the GIS map, showing where the lot is on the street. And good evening. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Preunier &amp; Pearlman here in Nashville. I'm here on behalf of Bill and Kathy Vassal, who are joining us by Zoom. With me tonight is our project engineer, Steve Auger from Hanner Swanson, who did the survey work. And should we proceed, they'll be doing the planning board work for the proposed subdivision. What we have for you tonight is a one-lot into two subdivision at 25 Hunt Street. We are in the RB District. We are seeking variances from Section 190-16, the dimensional tables of the Land Use Code. We have a lot that is exactly 10,000 square feet. And as we were looking at our options with this property, we thought that in order to accomplish the Vassal's goals, goal of subdividing the property, we thought it would be best to split the lot right down the middle, creating two proposed non-conforming lots, as opposed to having one conforming lot and then one very non-conforming lot. So we thought this was the best alternative that we could present to accomplish what our clients want to do. The neighborhood here is an old city neighborhood, laid out many, many years ago with the, we've seen them many times before. You have the 50 by 100-foot lots. And over time, some of those have stayed the same. Over time, some of those have grown, merged into one another. And so we have essentially two old lots that don't meet the code today. We have a neighborhood that is very much a mixed residential neighborhood. We have single-family homes, duplexes, we have multifamily homes scattered throughout the Hunt and Nagel and Dexter Street neighborhood. And I provided to you the city's GIS, and I highlighted a bunch of lots. And what those lots are, I keep losing my microphone.
You can pull it out of the holder if it makes it easier for you.
Yeah, just give that a twist to tighten, and it should stick.
You're apparently coming through okay, then.
Okay, good. Thank you. So the many highlighted lots that I have on the GIS that is before you, I will represent to you that I took a tour on GIS of the neighborhood this afternoon. And each of the highlighted lots are 50 feet in width, and between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet, depending on the depth of the lot. And my point in showing this to you is to show you that what we're proposing meets the character of the neighborhood. We're not out of character by any means with what we're proposing, because our lots will be 50 feet wide and 5,000 square feet, where the width needs to be 60 feet, and lots need to be 6,000 square feet. So we have many, many lots in the neighborhood that are exactly what we're proposing. Now, I will, I'll be the first to acknowledge that GIS and tax maps aren't always the most accurate maps out there, but this is what the city shows, and a review of your GIS will show that each of the lots I've highlighted meet the criteria that we're laying out We have two variances for each lot, Mr. Chairman. Each lot requires a width variance, again, 50 feet is what we're proposing, 60 feet is required. Size variance, 5,000 feet is proposed, 6,000 feet is required. And again, with the split down the middle, we really have no alternative. We thought this would be the best alternative for the Vassal's proposal. With that, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, you have our application? Just briefly touch on our points of law. We believe that we are not contrary to the public interest. There'll be no adverse effect to any public health or safety to the city. We are in the character of the neighborhood, as you can see from our GIS map and as proposed from the Hanner Swanson plan. We have really bare minimum of relief. We're requesting 10 feet in width and then 1,000 feet per lot. This sufficient space for a nice house on the new lot, a backyard, just like most of the other homes in the neighborhood. We see no harm to the public and a benefit to the owners when we balance the substantial justice comes out in favor of this criteria. We did receive a letter from a neighbor expressing their concern about property values. There's a letter from the owners of the 26 Hunt Limited Liability Company. And honestly, we respectfully disagree. We believe a new construction on the new lot and a renovation of the existing home or even a rebuild of the existing home will only improve values in the neighborhood. The home here will fit the neighborhood. It's not going to be a, you know, 10,000 square foot McMansion. It's going to fit the neighborhood. We believe the new construction will only lift the value of properties on the street. And finally, Mr. Chairman, given that we have a residential use in a residential district, we believe we're proposing a reasonable use. And we don't, we don't see any alternative, given the size of the lot, to prohibit the use. We believe we have a hardship for the Board to consider. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and perhaps Mr. Auger may be able to answer any questions for the Board.
Okay. Questions from the Board here in the room? Mr. Courier.
Just wanted to see if you could clarify. Maybe it was in the application, and I missed it. Is the existing home a single-family or two-family? And the proposed home?
Both, both single families.
Okay. The only question on my head.
Okay. Anybody else in the room? I don't see Ms. McKay's hand up, so it doesn't look like she has a question. Actually, Mr. Courier asked the question I was going to ask, which was, were these being planned as single-family or two-family homes? But that's been answered, so I have...
I guess I have one other question.
Oh, yeah.
About the single-family home, if that, if this Board were to approve it with that stipulation, what would your reaction be?
This is the difficulty of Zoom. I can't have a sidebar conversation with my client right now with a Zoom. I expect, I would prefer not to have that, have that condition on there, because my clients have said to us that they intend to have a single-family home there, but if they sell it to a builder who then can make a duplex fit somehow or a two-family otherwise. So I think that would be a constraint that I would prefer not to have, but I wouldn't be strenuously objecting.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Falk, would the square footage requirement change if it was a two-family?
They would need more land area. You know, a single-family, you know, requires a lot less land than a two-family. So it would need more land area. Also, two-family is generally a larger structure, so we'd have to see how it fits on the lot, setbacks, no open space, parking.
Well, when you say it needs more land area, would it need more land area than it currently has, i.e. would need a variance?
It would need a variance, because, let's see, RB, it would need 12,445 square feet of land for a two-unit on the vacant lot.
Yeah.
So that would need more land.
I just, I'm a little bit puzzled. I don't, I'm not sure how I would understand. Let's say that we granted this variance to allow 5,000 square feet instead of 6,000. Would that then give them permission to put a two-family on there regardless?
No.
No.
No. They would have to come back before this Board. Okay, there's one lot right now, 10,000 square feet with a single-family. Right now, it's all conforming.
Right.
If they want to subdivide it into two lots with a single-family house in each lot, each lot, as the applicant has applied for, would need a variance for land area for a single-family, which would need 6,000 square feet per lot, which they've applied for. They have, they would have 5,000. If they keep the single-family house on the lot, on the left, I'm sorry, on the right, and they want to build a two-family on the vacant lot, that particular lot would need 12,445 square feet, or it'd only have 5,000. So they would need to come back to this Board for a variance for the land area.
Okay, that helps. Mr. Boucher.
So just on that line, what I noticed is, is that the four duplexes right down the street, those definitely today are not really non-conforming lots. So, you know, the point's well taken, Mr. Courier. Because that would be totally different thing, and I would not expect, I would certainly expect that, you know, as Mr. Courier said, that they'd have to come back, because that's, that would be a huge gap compared to what they're asking for.
And Mr. Falk's hand is up.
I was just going to follow up. That a two-family structure is a permitted use in the RB Zone, provided it has the correct land area.
Okay. I see Ms. McKay has her hand up. I see Ms. McKay has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. If the homes are built and they're existing, can they then be added on to, to make them a two-family? Or would they have to follow all the same regulations again? And I guess that's following up on JP and Mr. Bouchet's and Mr.?
Courier.
Yeah.
That one, yes.
There are questions, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to check that out and make sure that they would have to come back.
Ms. McKay, that's correct. If, say for example, there's two single-family houses on each of these two lots, if one of them comes in for a building permit to convert from a single to a two-family, they would also need to come before this board because it wouldn't have enough land area.
Mr. Chairman, we would have no objection to a single-family condition.
But it doesn't sound like there's any point to doing that because the existing rules would require coming back before this-
It'd be a hard variance too.
Yeah, so I don't see the point of putting a condition on it. Any other questions from the board? Not seeing anybody, all right. Is there anybody who wishes else, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? And we see one person representing the applicant in the room, so how about on Zoom? Not seeing anybody-
I think they would like to, they had their hand raised, the applicant, the owners.
I think they're just physically raising it, not using the button.
Kathy- See, their hand is up, her hand is up.
Oh, didn't use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I can't see it. Okay.
Physically raised.
So whoever it is who wishes to speak, please give your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
Unmute yourself.
You have to unmute yourself also. I'm not hearing anything.
Not hearing.
So who is it that wants to say?
That's the property owner, Kathy and Bill Vassal.
Okay, yep.
You need to speak up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Turn your microphone up if you can.
If it's a computer, you might have it muted on your computer, not through Zoom. So you might have to, sometimes you have two letters of muting.
Zoom doesn't think it's muted, but, no, we can't hear.
Can't hear you.
Okay, well, I'll set it off.
She was trying to talk and we can't hear her, she's not muted.
I mean, did you want to try to call her on your phone and relay the message?
If the board will bear with me.
She sounds very faint on my end.
We can't hear it at all.
Can you try checking the audio settings in Zoom?
Thank you, Robert.
Hi, Kathy. The board cannot hear you, so you need to adjust your microphone and take your unmute or raise your microphone level.
I have to use manual setting.
Use the manual- Use your manual setting.
She may not, may not know where it is.
Okay, okay. I'll relay that. Thanks.
She can call in too.
Okay. The Vassals just wanted to thank the board for their time and they were okay with the one house stipulation, the single-family house stipulation.
Okay. All right. Okay, so let's see. We do have a letter in opposition, as Attorney Promlin mentioned. This is from Chris Burnett for 26 Hunt LLC. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but our property is directly across the street from 25 Hunt Street. They object to the variances. Our lot is close to, is similar in size to the 25 Hunt Street. Do not believe it is in the best interest to subdivide all of the lots that are about 10,000 square feet in this neighborhood. And the applicant, Mr. Burnett believes that it will bring down the values of houses and request that the zoning board deny the variances. And this letter will be in the minutes, attached to the minutes of the meeting. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition or with questions to this application? Okay, not seeing any. Attorney Promlin, you can spend five minutes to rebut the Mr. Burnett's law.
I have nothing further. Mr. Chairman, you know, this is, width variances are common variances, you see them all the time. This is not unlike a case that you heard about a year and a half ago on Berkshire Street. So these are, you know, when they fit the character of the neighborhood, you know, we're comfortable making these presentations. So thank the board for the time.
Okay. All right. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I actually continue to struggle with this application. I guess I'm really not, I guess I don't see the, what, the limitation that the applicant really has on the usage of the property. I appreciate that they want to, want to do the subdivision, but the property clearly is supporting a single-family home already. And then as far as the, you know, I appreciate that in the larger neighborhood, there's a, there are some number of these smaller lots, as Attorney Promlin shared with us, although it's, I think it's a relatively small percentage, maybe 15% or so, just from some quick kind of counting that I tried to do here. So it's, and the fact that many other, other lots in the immediate adjacency to this property are larger, I guess I'm, I'm just not convinced that there's a need to subdivide the lot. And so, and had non-conformance especially. So I feel like if all the other, you know, if all the other lots surrounding here were 5,000 square feet and this was like the one large lot, then to me, that's where it definitely is much more truly in character. So, so that's, that's my struggle. I'm open to kind of hearing what the rest of the board has to say and, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Courier.
I guess I was struggling a bit. I guess I was feeling a bit more towards, you know, I look at the four homes just towards the center in Nashville, would that be a bit on the north side? That, you know, it's a denser usage than, you know, number 25. That would be 23 A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H is in the one here. I went back and looked at this property, actually this evening, because we had received, you know, the letter from number 26. And I can't remember specifically looking at 26, but I wanted to go back and look at that after seeing the letter. You know, and I mean, interestingly, I guess I thought I was going to see kind of a large lot property like 25, you know, although 26 is very close to the road, it kind of looks like a denser property, you know? And so, you know, I guess, I guess I'm sitting on the fence on this one and looking to hear three other opinions, three more opinions, I should say. I don't discount yours at all.
Mr. Boucher.
I do, I do think that, you know, there is obviously proof of lots that were, obviously as history is, were set up maybe as the 50-foot wide lots and throughout this neighborhood, scattered and there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of different configurations here. But it's interesting as I look at some of those lots and as I look to those neighborhoods and I walk these neighborhoods when I go on walks, I find it interesting that some of these large lots, you see the house is literally like where it's supposed to be, like if it, if we were going back and the lot was split in half. So again, that's not justification, it's just kind of, kind of the position of houses and looking at what it was and, you know, and of course, zoning has changed. But again, I look at, you know, the neighborhood, it is to me mixed in the feeling of that neighborhood. So as Mr. Courier stated, there are some homes that are sitting right on the street that feel denser, even though they may have more, more property. So I think there's, there's a mix of all kinds of things going on here. I think it's a reasonable request. Again, I think it'll, it's, you know, going, it's not like there's nothing around it. We have some properties right in the rear that are the same size and again, you know, there's different sized lots. So I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying it is a multi-type looking type neighborhood. And, and I believe it'll, it'll fit in with the neighborhood. It's going to meet the dimensional requirements for setbacks and so, and again, we're talking about building, you know, you know, obviously one new house, maintain the original house is the plan. So, and again, I think it's just a benefit to the neighborhood and I think sometimes, you know, I appreciate the gentleman across the street putting his concerns, but I, I do believe when there's new construction in older neighborhoods that it does definitely bring up the values of homes. So I don't see a negative impact on this. I don't see a negative impact on density. Again, it's mixed. It's not like the, you know, we could go either way. I could say, hey, if the whole street was 50-foot lots, it would be easy. But I don't think that there's going to be a density issue as far as the neighborhood goes by, by splitting this lot in half. So with that, I'm feeling pretty confident supporting the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
Well, I think in many respects I echo what everybody has said so far. I don't think the request is unreasonable and it meets, I would think, most of the criteria. I'm a little stuck on where the hardship is because that is on the land and you can build one home. Like Mr. Boucher said, there's all different size homes and lots and I think everyone has commented on that. But to be honest, I'm, I'm just stuck. I don't know which, which way to go on this. Like I said, I look to meet all five criteria and criteria one, where the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property and the special conditions, that's where I'm stuck. That's where my hardship issue is. You could meet expectations of the property without the variance and utilizing one home. So I don't know. I just don't know on this, which I'm more un-in favor than in favor at this point, but I'm on the fence.
Thank you. I'm also struggling with this partly because it, there is, you know, it's an existing lot, the lots near it are all larger. Yes, there are some smaller lots in the neighborhood, but that particular section of Hunt Street tends to have larger lots. This is sort of what I would consider a self-imposed hardship because the property, there's no special condition of the property, other than it's big enough that the lot owner wants to, wants to subdivide it. And that to me is not on itself a reason to grant the variance. So I'm, I'm leaning against this at this, at this time. Any further discussion from the board? Not seeing anybody? Have a motion. Let's see, no. We had, we had three members who were leaning against it. Actually, it was not clear, maybe even four. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I would propose that we seek to have a motion made in favor of the variance and then see where that leads.
Okay.
If somebody's willing to make that motion.
Yep. All right. Is there somebody willing to make that motion? Mr. Boucher?
Well-
Are you?
Well, I'm in favor of the motion, but I don't, I don't understand.
I mean, it's, we do this a lot, you know, we're going to make a motion to grant the variance and see if the votes are there for it. And if not, we'll make a motion to deny the variance.
So I guess, again, I'll be more than happy to make the motion. It just seemed to be clear to me that, that it was not going to pass unless, again, this stuff. And again, I'm not asking of anybody to reveal whether they can vote, it just, I'm just struggling with, it seemed to be of four, seemed to be four people that would definitely vote against the motion.
My sense was two against, one in favor and two uncertain. So that's why I think there's a possibility it could pass.
Okay. All right. I understand. Okay. Thank you.
And we'll just take all four variances at once because that seems to make the most sense.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for William J. Junior, Catherine Vassal, owners of 25 Hunt Street, Sheet 102, Lot 30, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3. Proposed Lot 30, minimum lot area 6,000 square feet required, 5,000 square feet proposed, and two, minimum lot width 60 feet required, 50 feet proposed. For Proposed Lot 30-1, minimum lot area 6,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet proposed, and four for minimum lot width 60 feet required, 50 feet proposed. All requests to subdivide one lot into two lots. It's in the RB zone, Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that some of the special conditions that exist are, again, this neighborhood is, is a mixed look type of neighborhood. And what that means is, is that there are definitely lots in this neighborhood that are 50 feet wide, there are some larger lots, there are homes that sit right on the street. And again, there's an appearance that that maybe look denser than what they are. So again, the totality of it is, is that, again, this neighborhood and this street and the adjoining streets have a very, have different looks at different properties. So again, as a special condition of this, this also, and that, again, through history, even though zoning has changed, the existing house definitely sits facing the house to the right of the property as it, as it seemed to be done that way in anticipation of an additional lot to the left. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will non-diversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
I'll have a second. Mr. Shaw, thank you. Discussion of the motion. Ready to vote? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes not in favor.
Okay. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I'm still struggling, but I think that, I don't know, when in doubt, don't, I I'm going to vote in favor.
Okay. And I, Mr. Lionel, I'm going to vote not in favor, but that's three to two and the motion passes. So your variances are granted.
Thank you very much.
Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. You know the drill.
Okay. Thank you again. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Okay, moving to item number three. The owner is Amy Weber, address 16 Shady Lane, Sheet B, Lot 1484, requesting the following. First, a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190- First, a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of the home. And two, a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-32, B8, to not have an interior door between the primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit where one is required. This is in the R9 Zone, Ward 9. Somebody to present the case? I guess I would be on Zoom, right? Because I see Amy on Zoom.
Hi. Yes, I am on Zoom.
Okay, great. Damon, address for the record, please, and you have 15 minutes.
My name is Amy Weber from 16 Shady Lane. And my husband is right here next to me, sitting next to me. He's Ryan Edwards. But my name is on the property here, so. Hello there. Good evening. This past year, with all the housing challenges that were going on, my father, who's 75 years old, lost his housing. He came to live in our spare bedroom for about three to four months. And while he has since moved out, it did prompt us to take a look at the unused space that we have in our basement, as you can see photos here. When we purchased the home, this space was considered a quote-unquote potential in-law. It's already plumbed. It has, it's plumbed for the bathroom, fully plumbed for the bathroom. It's got a toilet in there, as you can see in some of the pictures. And then, as well as the shower. And then in the back, there's plumbing for a kitchenette-type area. So it was a potential in-law as we were drawn to this house. And so again, since he has moved out, we're essentially looking at this place, this space in preparation for if he does need to come back. While we love him very much, we would like to provide him with another space that he can call his own. The other is, you know, if any other aging parent needs a space in our home as well, we are prepared for that to happen. So that's what's prompting us to want to finish this space. As you can see, it's, you know, fully framed out. We're getting ready to finish and insulate. We haven't done any insulation because we wanted to go through all of this first. It has its own separate entrance. It won't change the look of the house at all. Nothing would change on the exterior of the home. It has its own single space next to our driveway where they can walk around the deck and walk down back. Or we've also contemplated paving a space down into the backyard. But that's up in the air. We haven't decided on that. So we are proposing or looking for a variance with no connecting door from the main home to the potential in-law because right now, there currently is none. Right now, there is an exterior door there. And then the, there is a window that goes to the exterior in the proposed bedroom. So that's where we meet that criteria of having an exit large enough outside of the bedroom. That being said, in order to add an interior door between the main unit and the in-law, it would take breaking through the foundation on both sides. There was a separate foundation poured for this space here in the addition. So we would have to break through two walls of foundation. So that's why we're requesting that as well. Thank you. Oh, wait, we've.
You'd only have to.
I'm sorry, just one wall. We have just one wall of foundation. We would have to break through.
But that's really not an option for us yet.
Yeah.
This is really just an unusable space at this point. And we're looking to make it usable. They used to have a pool, and this was used as a pool house. That's where they kept everything when they did their addition in the 70s or 80s. But the pool is no longer there, and this space is completely unusable, other than that.
Other than that, yeah. And that's all. Thank you for consideration.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
It's the usual, just, I'm assuming, especially since this came up, as far as this interior door, that you're already familiar with the rest of the total nine criteria for the accessory dwelling unit and that you do meet or will meet all those other ones other than the interior door. So where do we need to step through those? And you can just answer yes to each of them?
That's correct. Well, we've gone through those with Carter. And then it was just that door that we couldn't meet.
Okay. So I think we can just go with your testimony that you already are aware of these and that you will meet all of these criteria. That saves us some extra time of going through them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Currier?
Yeah, I'm not a construction guy, but I would think that to connect the two, you just put a header over and saw through the concrete. I mean, so I'm just wondering if that's not the case. I mean, granted, sawing through concrete is not as quick as removing wood, but I think that's done all the time.
Yep. So as a, essentially, we would like to propose without having to do that. We're trying to keep costs, like to our homeowner. We are refinancing, cash-out refinancing, in order to finish the space. So we just want to make sure that we've got enough funds to be able to do that.
I also want to add that the foundation, the main part of the house has slowly dipped about, I would say, three inches out of level. So that foundation is really a solid part of the house. And the rest of it is not terrible. But as in the 70s, you may not see this in construction a lot, but I installed gas fireplaces for a living. Our floorboards and a lot of things have been hacked through. So I don't want to do anything that takes away from the structural integrity of the house. Any, you know, so having that big, long, concrete wall that sits practically in the middle of our house is actually, I want to keep that intact if possible.
I guess just a follow-up. Has there any thought of just having a staircase added? So instead of going horizontally from like basement to basement or lower level to lower level, you go from lower level to upward level, upward level just above it?
So right above it is directly the center of our living room. And so I don't know that that would be an option. If we were to do the front of the house, like where the kitchen, the proposed kitchen would be, that would be kind of like a, in our mudroom. So essentially, we would drill down that way. Honestly, we did not explore that. Oh, I didn't.
So we could put like some sort of escape hatch or something like that that folds down, like you would see in an attic or something like that. So that we could frame that into, you know, our section of the house because our living room sits directly over this unit. I was hoping that that wouldn't be necessary. We do actually have three points. We will have three points of egress. So we will have three points of escape in case of a fire or anything like that. And that's my main, was my main concern. As far as getting, you know, having a connection to that location, I mean, it's, I definitely know that it's required, but we can, that's another way that we could do it. But it was, I was hoping that maybe the points of egress would be, maybe make you guys think that that was enough.
Okay.
I was just going to state that, you know, I did talk to the applicant at length about this. And, you know, the sentiment I got was that while it may be possible to have some kind of interior connection, it would really be a burden to the primary structure because it would be like right in the middle of their living room or, you know, by their mudroom area. And to us, the biggest thing really is the safety of that unit. And they'll have three means of ingress and egress to that unit. That's what we're most concerned about is safety. I mean, if a family relative is living there, certainly they'll probably have walkie-talkies or an intercom or cell phones to get in touch with one another if need be. But, you know, we're, our primary concern is the safety of all the residents living in there. And from what I gathered from talking to them, it was a very difficult thing to do, and it would possibly alter the integrity of the structure of their main house. So they thought this was the easiest way to do it.
I always thought that the requirement for the interior door was not for egress specifically, but to make it feel a little bit less than a two-family house. But we had to approve a number of ADUs where the owner said, yeah, there's going to be a door and it's going to be locked. And there's nothing we could do about that, so.
We have found a lot of ADUs, you know, after the fact, they put a door in and it's locked on both sides, and no one ever goes through it at all. And in fact, I used to live in one that the interior door was through a large closet, and it was never opened. And they had a large wall unit in front of it on the other side. And it would, it would take hours and hours to get through that door. It just wasn't feasible. But, you know, on the other, on the other hand, they have no front door at all, no side door at all to this unit. It's around the back and down, so you don't even know that it's a, really a unit down there, so.
Can I see, Ms. McKay has a question?
Yes, I do. And excuse my ignorance, if, as it were, but why the choice of an ADU as opposed to just an in-law apartment and go with it that way? That would avoid the whole conversation around the door, which is part and parcel of the covenant you have to agree to. So that would eliminate omitting one of the conditions. So to me, in my mind, because I agree with Carter, structural integrity is extremely important. And so is safety. So was there a consideration to just, as you keep referring to it, an in-law apartment as opposed to an ADU? What was, help me to understand the rationale as to why one of these nine points should be omitted?
Well, essentially, in my mind, they are one and the same in the sense that for us to finish an in-law apartment, we would need to come into zoning board legally. And that's actually why we're here. We want to do it the right way and make sure that if anything, you know, happens moving forward, that's documented. We're doing everything that we are supposed to be doing for our property. We wouldn't want to do anything behind the city's back.
I mean, we're also looking to have this all, you know, kosher because we're hoping to have, while we're living here, a tenant. And so, you know, that's, that's the, that is the hope, that we're going to be able to use this as, you know, if need be, you know, or just to have the, just to have the option to, you know? So.
Right. So essentially, you know, the space is very much as a preparation space for any and all family members that might need the space. And what prompted that, again, was my dad, who is now in a rental unit. And essentially, at that point and any point, could change. So we just want to make sure that we're prepared for that. He also is from, my husband, I'm pointing to him, you can't see, is from Georgia. So if his family wants to come up and visit, that would be a nice, you know, area for them to stay for a week and not be in our space. But ultimately, you know, we just want to make sure we're going by, you know, the correct process for natural, essentially.
Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe what Mrs. McKay was asking about was why they maybe weren't going for a two-family and not apply for the variance for the interior door. A two-family is a whole different type of land use with the building code and with the zoning code. A two-family would not be permitted in the zone whatsoever. So they would need a use variance. And that's a harder bar to jump over use-wise than an area variance. So that's one of the reasons. Also due to the size and, you know, the nature, the location of the proposed ADU, it really more fits the character and spirit of an ADU-type of unit than a two-family, so. I believe that's why they appropriately asked for the special exception for the ADU and the variance to allow the unit to be not connected. I'm sorry, to, yeah, to be not connected.
That's correct.
Ms. McKay, are you done?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. I saw Mr. Shaw's hand up first.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify because maybe it was, again, Ms. McKay just really, like Mr. Falk said, maybe was talking about two-unit. But as far as, we used to deal with so-called in-law apartments or units that did require the relationship, familial relationship, which is no longer part of this ADU requirement. So there really isn't a separate in-law apartment versus ADU any longer. It's just an ADU. And that matter of relation to the applicant owner is no longer something that's required. So that was part of, you know, the law that changed a few years ago. So I just wanted to clarify that for anybody else that might be listening or getting, you know, a little bit confused that we don't have that distinction any longer.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to clarify for me that three means of egress. If you could, was that three means of egress for the existing structure and for the proposed unit? Or is it three in the whole house?
No, it's three for the proposed unit and the existing structure. So there are two full-size windows that meet the criteria for the egress and then the exterior door.
Okay. So is that, was that for the main unit or for the proposed unit?
That's for the proposed unit.
Okay.
The house is separate. That has its all, that has its own separate proper means of ingress and egress. It'd be, I believe it's the bathroom window, a bedroom window, and the back door to get into the unit.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And they're, you know, the windows meet the height, you know, for an ingress window. It has to be like five square feet. It can't be more than a certain height off the ground. And they've already checked the building department about that, so.
I just had a quick question. Looking at the picture from, of the back of the house. So is my understanding correctly that originally this house was built, it was, it was maybe half the width that it is now, and a previous owner basically extended it off to the side and created this isolated room that you said was being used as a pool house underneath? Is that correct?
Yeah, so not just underneath, the whole side section. And it's hard because I'm not able to point to it. But where our, if you're looking at the front of the house, where you can see that separation where the side door is versus the front door, that's all an addition that was added in the 80s, in 84. And then that basement portion of it was added at that time as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? So I'm not seeing anybody else on Zoom, so. And that probably means there's nobody who wishes to speak in opposition or with questions. Doesn't look like it. Okay. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I'm in favor. I just, you know, I really was anxious to kind of get to the meeting tonight to understand why this, you know, this issue with the interior door. And it's kind of quite curious. And, you know, why would there be this space that wouldn't have, you know, that connection? And now finally, understanding the context of this kind of pool house usage, it makes a lot of sense. And I think, to me, that is very much the special condition that's occurring here. And I guess I'm satisfied and am willing. to support that variance for that part of things. And the rest of the special exception ADU request is, is met. So all in totality, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I'm in favor of the, the special exception. You know, I think that meets all the criteria. I am struggling with the variance for the door. So a couple thoughts, like typically, I'm going to go back to the first thought of just going through the concrete wall. I'm sticking with what my neighbor did, which was just go right through when he extended the side of his house. In terms of the comment on, on the structure, like sagging and maybe having a foundation problem, I don't feel that that is a criteria that this board should be dealt with. That should be dealt with if there's any thought of that. There should be an engineer looked at it and that rectified, not kind of maybe sort of, and therefore we don't want to do it. That's, that's kind of what I'm hearing and I'm just uncomfortable with that. Also to the point of where ADUs that we've approved, the door remains locked. I'm not surprised. I'd be more surprised if that didn't happen. But a very crucial component of the relaxed ADU laws as they've become in the last few years was the interior connection door to prevent the, the situation of where it really becomes a two-family home. And quite frankly, what I've heard tonight, you know, folks might get a tenant in there after this is done. That's creating a two-family home. So I, I, I'd have to be convinced that, I, I don't see, as you do, Mr. Shaw, I, I think this doesn't meet the criteria for the interior connection. And also one other thing, there was a mention of a mudroom. We don't have any dimensions of it. But to me, the perfect spot for an interior door is the mudroom. Right? When you walk into a mudroom, you, you walk in either into your house or you take a turn and go through a door and down the stairs. So while I would agree that making a staircase to go into a living room is, you know, cha, you know, it kind of screws up the design, you know, going into a mudroom, I think is right on target. That's why I'm saying it. And happy to hear, I want to hear other opinions as well.
Okay. Mr. Boucher?
I, I agree with Mr. Shaw. Same, same comments that he made. Again, especially the comment about the special condition of the property. And again, this property to me is, you know, is a unique in its own nature where this room is because again, not know, you know, not being told, we would never know that that's back there. So I, I, I do understand Mr. Courier's point. I also believe though, that even with interior doors, you know, I think we have the same effect where, where if people are renting to non-famil, you know, non-family, it becomes the same thing. So, but in this case here, I believe that, again, no front door, no side door, you wouldn't know that, that was there. So, so I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Okay. So my point still goes back as Mr. Courier's point. The sticking point for me is the door. If this is no longer requiring a familial connection, then maybe point number seven should have been taken out. But of the accessory dwelling units. But if this is to remain an ADU as opposed to a tenant situation, an in-law apartment, two-family, then that door needs to stay because once there is no door, then it makes it a little different. It gives more sense of individuality and not connectivity. So I look at this the same way Mr. Courier does. And while I agree with the variance, I disagree with the connecting door piece. And I wonder if we, and I don't know if we've set this precedent before, if we have gone on and said an ADU does not need that connecting door. I do not know or I do not remember, and maybe someone from the board can help with that, if we've ever eliminated one of the exceptions in going for an ADU. I don't think we have, but correct me, you know, obviously if that's an incorrect statement. So at this point in time, I, I can't support this application because of that door. And I'm, that's where I guess I'm coming down. I struggled with the door, which is why I started asking the questions initially. And I still struggle with that.
Thank you. Yeah, I, the door was also, is also an issue for me. But I recognize that in reality, the requirement for the connecting door is somewhat toothless because, as I commented earlier, we've had a number of applications where the applicant has been very straightforward. They say, yeah, we're going to keep that door locked and nobody's going to go through it. But yeah, as Ms. McKay says, the, the fact that that requirement's there keeps it from appearing as a two-family apartment. But the law allows no familiar, familiar connection and people are renting them out to, to non-family people. Given the design of this house, I'm kind of reluctant to insist on them building a stairway up into the main part of the house or cutting through the concrete wall for something that's not likely to be used. So I'm in favor of the special exception and I'm sort of leaning towards approving the area variance. But I'm not happy about it. Mr. Shaw?
I just wanted to respond to Ms. McKay's point. We have approved other variances associated with the ADU special exception. Most notably, we've definitely approved ones where the area has been greater than 750 square feet for various, you know, situational reasons. Maybe the footprint of the structure was such that, you know, it was 800 feet or whatever, and it didn't make sense to restrict the, the lack of using that additional square footage. I think we've also had a new curb cut one time where just the nature of the way, there, there was like a second driveway. And those are ones that come to mind. So we, we have done this before because, you know, none, none of these things ever fit completely neatly into the recipe and, and all the restrictions. So I find that, yeah, this would be the first time that I can, I mean, I think we, we had one where I think it was the, the unit over a garage and there was, I think they, we ended up, you know, kind of talking with the applicant about doing something with the stairwell. And I think there was a lot of back and forth about that. But that's where, you know, I think the board was not very comfortable with the, I think it was going to be an outside entrance on the back or, you know, through a, like an exterior hallway. So I think that, in that case, I think, you know, we, we didn't approve that. But that was again, very specific to that situation. So to me, I find this is very, you know, it's, this is unique. It's special condition of the property. And so again, I'm, I'm willing to support it.
Mr. Courier?
Just one other thought on the interior door is that while some applicants have said and do keep them locked, the spirit and the intent of the ordinance is maybe one applicant or one owner, you know, isn't going to use it for that purpose. In, in cases, if we approve to not have that interior connection, to me, that's in perpetuity, it's not there. So if the next owner comes along and wants to use the ADU to, to help an elderly parent, that option, you know, isn't there unless they take it upon themselves. I just wanted to throw that out also. But enough said.
Any more comments from the board? So.
I have a.
Yep. Ms. McKay?
Thank you. I'm, I know, Mr. Shaw, I remember, you know, the specific case with, where they had to maneuver through the garage. I also remember going a little bit over on square footage. But I don't remember ever eliminating altogether a requirement. We've maybe bent it, but we've never eliminated it. And so eliminating the door for me does not make it, as Mr. Courier just said, it no longer is an ADU. And that is my sticking point. That's where I'm trying to reconcile. I understand having to do an awful lot of structural work or an awful lot of work. I've just done an awful lot of work on my own home. So I understand that. But I still struggle with if there was to come a time where the home was sold and it is now stated that there's an ADU on the property, that's not quite correct because an ADU has adjoining door and there's no joining door. And that's where I struggle. I don't know, maybe someone else here still has better points of view and better information than I have, which can help clear up my struggle at this point.
Well, I'd just throw out, I think the cases that Ms. McKay and Mr. Shaw were referring to was, was coming back and was up on the north end. And I would say that we, we bent the rules to allow the interior connection through the garage. You know, originally there was either no connection or an outside connection or an outside staircase. And the negotiated result, you might say, was, so, you know, you, you could go help the other person, but you'd, you'd have to walk through the enclosed, enclosed garage, you know. It wasn't a detached garage. It was all on structure. But that was just coming back to my memory when Ms. McKay said we bent the rules. That's, that's what that one was.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. First, let's take care of the special exception. Somebody care to make a motion on the special exception? Okay. Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Amy Weber. The address is 16 Shady Lane, Sheet B, Lot 1484, for a special exception from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an, allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in lower level of the home. This is in the R9 zone. It's listed in the table of uses. It's just noted in the description. There's, there will not be any creation of undue traffic congestion or impairment of pedestrian safety. There will be no overloading of public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The spec, special regulations are fulfilled with the exception of the number seven, the interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit as proposed, which will be either taken care of by variance, the area variance request, or the applicant will need to proceed with providing a door if that is not approved. And there will be no impairment on the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health morals or welfare of the residents. And just one, you know, I guess that's all I needed to say. And again, I move to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Discussion of the motion. Ready to vote? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
On the special exception, Ms. McKay's going to vote no.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Again, this is just clarifying, this is the special exception and I'm voting in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Landell, vote in favor of the special exception. So that's four to, enough, four to one on the special exception. So that passes. So now we come to the area variance for the interior door. Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Amy Weber. Address is 16 Shady Lane, Lot, excuse me, Sheet B, Lot 1484, for a variance from land use code section 190-32B8, to have an interior door between the primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit where one is required.
To, to not have.
To, to not have. Sorry. Yeah, I realize I think I misspoke. So the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. This home had a relatively large addition added quite a while ago where the lower level, basement level part of the structure was constructed such that there was no connection to the rest of the interior of the existing home or the new first floor part of the home and was used apparently as a pool house type of usage for a previous pool, which was on the property. So the, that is why it would not, there is no door currently between this part of the structure and the rest of the home. And for that reason, the variance is required. So it would be within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It would not be contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. And I move that we approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes not in favor. I should have, I confused my votes. I should have voted in favor on special exception, but, and.
It didn't matter.
Not in favor on the variance. So I'm voting not in favor on the variance.
And I, Mr. Landell, I'm going to vote not in favor of the area variance. So that's three to two against. And so we, now we need a motion to deny the area variance. Mr. Courier?
All right. Let me get my notes here. All right. Okay. I'm making a motion again. This is 16 Shady Lane. The owner is Amy Weber. I'm making a motion to deny the area variance. And again, the variance in this request is to not have an exterior door between the primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit where one is required. I believe perhaps a majority of the board finds that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. While the board notes that there is a, a concrete foundation that exists between the proposed ADU and the balance of the property, I think the, the majority of the board finds that a door nonetheless could be added. And, and that would be, and I think the board finds that without having the door, it's not within the spirit and the intent of the ADU ordinance. I think I, the board doesn't have a comment on the effective property values and surrounding parcels. But the board does find that by not having the connecting door in the spirit of the ADU, it's, it is therefore not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice is not served with the request. So with that, I make a motion to deny.
All right. Do I have a second? I'll second it.
And just, I want to clarify because it was your turn to misspeak. You said exterior door when you meant interior door.
Oh, interior door. Sorry about that.
For the record, I wanted to have it clear. I know that's what you intended.
I missed that altogether.
Okay. So I seconded it. I think I'm allowed to do that. Never sure about these things.
No, no. You're, you're allowed to make the motions or second or any of them.
Yeah, there are some.
Some boards.
Some boards where that's not allowed. Okay. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes not in favor.
You vote not in favor. Okay. You vote not in favor, okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor.
You vote not in favor, okay, yeah, all right, not in favor. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the...
Of the denial.
Of the denial.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor of the denial.
Okay, and I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor of the denial. So that's three to two. The area variance is denied. Sorry about that. You do have the ADU special exception, so you can, if you come up with a way to create an interior door between the ADU and the main part of the house, then you are good to go. So there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions on that.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, we have minutes from...
Excuse me, just for one second. I was just curious, again, not making a point of Ms. McKay, but is there, is there a vehicle, if we, we had changed our mind, can we, for the record, change the vote, or is that...
No, I don't think we can.
Is that, is that, once it's done, it's done, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can't reverse? No, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think the only thing, just the maker of the motion retracts their motion. It doesn't make a difference in the, in the outcome, that, that would be the way.
But, yeah, I would've been more concerned if there was a misunderstanding at that point in what vehicles, I thought there was something, but it doesn't matter tonight, it just, I just was just curious.
Since we're discussing it, maybe a lesson learned is, I, you know, we can all get confused at times. Like I said, exterior door, where obviously that's not what I meant, and, and Ms. McKay, you know, thought it was, it was a variance, you know? It probably, if, if something like that were to happen, maybe, you know, one of us other board members could always say, just, let me, you know, ask for a clarification of that. But just a thought, it's continuous improvement, but I think we're, we're good to go here.
I, I did, I did ask Ms. McKay if she was voting on the special exception, but I didn't want to influence her vote by saying anything more than that.
Yeah.
No, thank you, I understand that's why I, I spoke up and said something, but there's no reconsideration here where we can vote to change the vote. So it passed, which is a good thing, I'm glad it passed, which is why I clarified my position, it was my error. And I'm just glad that it passed, but I did, you know, maybe we all, I live and learn, I learn something new every day.
We all do. Okay, so we have minutes from the December 14 meeting. Did it, has everybody had a chance to review them, or anybody see any, any changes necessary? I did not. Okay. Mr. Shaw?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning board minutes from December 14.
Okay, second, Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I vote, Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor, okay, five to nothing, the minutes of December 14 are accepted. We have agenda for the January 25 meeting. Does anybody see any regional impact from this? We have three cases.
I do not.
Mr. Shaw says no. Mr. Courier?
I see no regional impact.
Mr. Boucher? And Ms. McKay?
No.
And I don't see any either. I will comment that we are required to have board elections in the month of January. I don't know if we want to do it now, or just, you know, express our, our interest in positions that we might want, and then we can do a, we can have the election on the January 25 meeting. Is, is that acceptable to people? I'm, I'd be glad to serve as president, as chair again. Are, you know, others wanting to switch around positions? Mr. Shaw?
This just goes back to the timing. I mean, the only thing I'd say is, we know we have all five of us here right now.
Right.
And oftentimes, we don't have all five of the full-time members. So I know we have often tried to make sure we do the elections when, when we are all in attendance. I expect to be here at the meeting on the 25th, but I do know there's a chance I might not be, so just from that regard.
So you would prefer that we actually...
I'd prefer we perhaps consider voting tonight, but if, if the rest of the board would prefer to wait, and, you know, I don't have to, you know, if I'm not here, the rest of the board should vote.
Okay, so, Ms. McKay, what was your, did you have an interest in a, in a position?
Actually, based on our conversation last year, yes, I probably do.
And which position would you like to run for?
I think unless someone else wants to have the position, I think I would like to run for chair.
Okay, so you and I are both running for chair again? And, and are we gonna do this, this thing we did last year with whoever doesn't get the chair gets the vice chair? Is that acceptable to you?
Um, yes.
Yeah, okay. And Jack, did you want to be a clerk again, or would you like to pass that on to somebody else?
You know, I'm happy to serve in any capacity, and I'll start off by saying I'm delighted that Mr. Lionel and Ms. McKay are interested in, you know, continuing to step up for the chair, and I'm, and that's great. I'm happy to serve as clerk, it does take a little more time. I became the Ward 8 clerk in November. I'd be happy if, you know, one of the other folks wanted to jump in there, but if not, I'd be willing to do it, you know, as well, but I just wanted to throw that all out on the table, and, you know, I didn't know if Mr. Boucher or Mr. Shaw had an interest in that.
I would be happy to have you continue, quite frankly. As clerk, I'm, I'm good to just serve, you know, not in a, one of the other roles.
And JP, did you have...
I'm good as, as it is, and I will not throw my hat in the ring for chair if, if it's, it's just between you and Ms. McKay, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right. So I guess, I guess that's it. So let's see, let's, since Jack is the only candidate for clerk, let's just take a, we'll take a vote on that. This is in...
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, make a motion to appoint Jack Courier as clerk for the 2022 session of the zoning board of adjustment. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I'll vote in favor.
Electively, Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
You could vote not in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor, sorry.
Ms. McKay? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Yeah, and I vote in favor, okay, Jack, you're stuck with that again. Okay.
Jack takes great notes too, by the way.
Yes, he does.
He does a great job.
I think probably somebody else ought to make the motion for, for chair, chair slash vice, well, chair, and then whoever, whichever of us doesn't get the chair will be serving as vice chair, which is fine. Could somebody make the motion for that, please? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'll make, well, I need to make it with, so I'll make a mo, actually, I think we should just do it. I'll make a motion for you, Mr. Lionel, as chair, and Ms. McKay as vice chair.
Okay, we'll see how that goes.
There needs to be a second.
And Mr. Boucher, second? Okay. Okay, Mr. Shaw, how do you vote on that motion?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
In favor? Mr. Courier?
I, I guess I'll, I'll vote not in favor, I don't want to say anything, you've been doing a great job, I just kind of look at it as, you know, they're, mix it up another year, another person.
Yeah.
And so that's, just throw that out on the table.
That's fine.
Ms. McKay.
Yeah? Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I vote not in favor, as Mr. Courier said, and as we said last year. It was, it shouldn't be the same consecutive, so that's why I'm voting against it, not against your job, against the, or for the idea of mixing it up.
And surprise, surprise, I'm going to vote not in favor.
What?
So that's two to three in favor of me being chair, so I guess now we need a motion to switch it around. Okay? Mr. Courier, you're, okay.
Well, based on the progress of discussions this evening, I make a motion for Ms. McKay to be chairwoman, and Mr. Lionel to be vice, are we just doing chair?
Yes, chair and vice chair, yeah.
Okay, then Mr. Lionel is vice chair.
Yep. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, second, okay. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Oh, you could vote against this one if you wanted.
And it will still pass.
Okay, I'll vote against this one, and I'll make it.
That'll really tie us up.
And I'll, I'll vote in favor, that's already three in favor. It's five, five to nothing. Mary Ellen, you're stuck with it for the next year.
Congratulations, Ms. McKay.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, so that in 2022, we may be reversing chairs yet again.
2022, okay, and make a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you, we are adjourned at 8:11 PM.
Good night, everyone.